Good evening and welcome. This is to call to order the 523rd meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission. I'd like to welcome those of you here joining us this evening, and I'd like to welcome those watching by television. Please note that if you wish to be heard at this meeting, please sign the speaker list provided on the table at the side of the council chamber. The chairman reserves the right to limit the amount of time each speaker has for each item. I'd like to start by sending well wishes from the entire Planning Commission to our chairman, Don Wiliford, and his wife, Michael. Don, if you're home watching, we miss you. We're ready for you to come back, and we wish you all the best. And that's from all of us. Thank you. Ms. Green, if you would please call the roll.
Council President Smalls, Mr. Wiliford.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Kish.
Here.
Mrs. Holland.
Here.
Chairman Wiliford.
Acting Chairman Bateman.
Here.
You have a quorum, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Agenda item two, approval of the minutes from the October 14, 2014 meeting. Does anyone have changes to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'll move to approve the minutes, and again, thank the staff for a great job on making it almost look like we knew what we were talking about. Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Ms. Green, please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Wiliford.
Yes.
Mr. Kish.
I abstain. I wasn't at the meeting.
Chairwoman Bateman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item three, we have the application for an amended site and landscape plan, 14-800 Fourth Street, Middletown Apartments, filed by Southern Management Corporation. Ms. Pulley, please present the staff report.
Good evening. The applicant, Middletown Apartments, is seeking to amend their existing site and landscape plan to install a six-foot fence along the front of the apartment community as opposed to the permitted three-and-a-half-foot fence. And the reason they would like to do that is because of the increased foot traffic from the high school students at Laurel High School, as well as the Town Center patrons. And then they also have three bus stops along the Fourth Street where their community is located. And furthermore, the new Regal Theater is in close, very close proximity to their community, so they would like to put up a six-foot fence to try to deter the increased loitering. And once they do this, their whole community will be enclosed except for the parking that's on the side next to the Emerson. And also, if they were to put up a three-and-a-half-foot fence, they felt that it could, kids could possibly hop the fence, hurt themselves, so it's also a safety mechanism for the community. And I recommend that the Planning Commission approve the amended site and landscape plan with the following condition, for them to obtain a City of Laurel fence permit.
I'm sorry, for them to obtain a City of Laurel fence permit?
Correct. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
I'm good with this.
Okay.
I'm good.
I'd like to open the public hearing. There are no, we do have one person signed up. I believe you're here, if we had any questions for you. If there are no questions for the applicant, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'll move that we approve the final, is it, site and landscape, nope, wrong one. I'm sorry.
Number three, amended site.
Yep, here we go. Amended site and landscape plan at 14,800 Fourth Street, Middletown Apartments, and the staff report there, too.
I'll second that, Madam Chairman.
And inclu, I'm sorry, Mr. Kish, and include the resolution 14-19 PC.
I'll break second with the action.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Green, please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Kish.
Yes.
Mr. Wiliford.
Yes.
Mrs. Holland.
Yes.
Chairman Bateman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. Agenda item seven, the next agenda item is the application for a final site and landscape plan, 14-250 Park Center Drive, The Goddard School, filed by Jalaram Ventures LLC. Ms. Pulley, please present the staff report.
Yes, the applicant, once again, is seeking final site and landscape approval to construct the one-story, 8,667-square-foot building with onsite parking for a childcare facility known as The Goddard School. The vacant lot is located at 14-250 Park Center Drive in the Greater Laurel Professional Park. The property was annexed into the city in 2001 and placed in the Seaback Zone. The childcare facility will provide outdoor play areas for both infants and toddlers, also preschool play structures as well. The school will house 130 students or children and operate from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. They plan to provide 36 parking, excuse me, 38 parking spaces where the code requires them to provide 22 spaces. Out of the 38 spaces, two of them will be handicap spaces for accessibility. There would be one entrance-exit point off of Park Center Drive. The final plan submitted meets all the requirements, demands from the zoning ordinance, and the signage, they will plan to have one monument sign and possibly two flat wall signs that looks like it's gonna be in the regulation guidelines. It is recommended that the Planning Commission approve the site plan, the final site and landscape plan with the following conditions. The applicant must receive stormwater management approval from French Georgia's County and submit approval letter, excuse me, submit approval letter before building permits can be issued. The applicant must provide a signature block for the Department of Public Works on finer mylar. The applicant must obtain City of Laurel construction and sign permits, and the applicant must meet all comments that was proposed in the public works memo.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff before opening the public hearing?
I have just one, Madam Chair. Under the conditions, the number two, the applicant must provide a signature block for the Department of Public Works, is that just an all-around coverage of everything that they have requested?
Right. Basically, once the application, the site plan is approved, Public Works signs off on it, as well as the Planning Commission chair is showing that the site plan was approved, and will have it to house in our department.
So that one block covers all of their concerns, the lighting and
Yes, sir.
driveway and everything? Okay.
Any other questions for staff? This time, we'll open the public hearing on the application. I have three individuals signed up to speak. Carlo Ostria, welcome.
Madam Chairman, I'm Carlo Ostria, with A. Morton Thomas Engineers, representing the applicant, and we're here to answer any questions. And certainly, I agree with the conditions already comply, and to thank the staff, they've been fantastic, working with the staff on this project, and the owners here, as well as the architect with Goddard, to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
I have none.
Okay. And the same for the next two that were signed up. Is there anyone that would wish to speak? Or just, okay. Thank you. I'll close the public hearing at this time. Are there any further questions from the commissions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the final site and landscape plan for 14-250 Park Center Drive, The Goddard School, filed by DeMarin Ventures LLC, and take action on resolution number 14-20-PC.
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Green, please call the roll.
Mrs. Holland.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Wiliford.
Yes.
Mr. Kish.
Yes.
Chairwoman Bateman.
Yes.
Yeah, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Thank you.
Good luck.
Yes, good luck. Welcome to Laurel. The final agenda item, agenda item 11, is the text amendment number 236, ordinance number 1815, an ordinance to amend Chapter 20, land development and subdivision, Article One zoning, Division Five zoning districts of the Laurel City Code to allow tobacco, retail, and smoking lounges as a special exception in a CG commercial general zone, CSH commercial shopping zone, and CV commercial village zone, providing an effective date for recommendation to the mayor and city council. Ms. Pulley, please present the staff report and the proposed ordinance.
Yes, good evening, once again. The applicant, Ms. Sharon Harris, is seeking special exception, excuse me, seeking text amendment approval for application 236, ordinance number 1815, to allow a retail store and smoking lounge by special exceptions in the commercial shopping, commercial general, and commercial village zones. If the application is approved by the mayor and city council, the applicant will proceed to receive special exceptional approval. The ordinance simply states that we would be amending our zoning code to allow these type of uses by special exception in either the commercial shopping, the commercial general, or the commercial village zone. And there are a few conditions that stipulate it under this ordinance, and for one, it would be for retail sales of cigars, flavored tobacco, hookahs, and accessories. And also, a smoking lounge is subject to the following conditions. A lounge patron must meet the legal age requirement to purchase alcohol and tobacco. Smoking lounge can only sell prepackaged snacks such as chips and nuts. Sales of the prepackaged food is considered incidental and cannot exceed 20% of the sales, of the sales live performances by band and our performance group permitted for special events. No dancing permitted at the lounge. It is recommended that the City of Laurel Planning Commission recommend to the mayor and city council that the text amendment application number 236, ordinance number 1815, for a retail store and smoking lounge be approved with the following conditions stated in ordinance number 1815.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the staff?
Madam Chairman, I have a few.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Christian. First question is, in terms of the zones that this applies to, so can you give me an example of a commercial village zone?
Commercial village zone is the Main Street area, the historic, not all of the historic district, but the Main Street area, some parts of the Route One corridor, and the side streets of Main Street, so it'd be like B Street, Abundale, and so forth.
So the places where we have light commercial, like at the corner of Montgomery and Sixth, where the little dry cleaner and that kind of thing, or up by where the ice cream store is up here, are those CV, or are they something else?
CG for where the ice cream shop is located, and I believe the cleaners is, I don't believe that's CG as well. Yeah, it might be commercial, commercial.
Okay.
Community commercial.
Community commercial. Okay. I was just curious. So the other thing is on the conditions, which I don't have a problem with this as you've written it, I just, clarification. So it said that you must meet the legal age to purchase alcohol and tobacco. Those are two different ages, right?
Right.
So you've got, in today's law, you'd have to be 21 to be in there?
To purchase tobacco, you have to be 18. 21 to purchase alcohol.
Yeah, but you've got an "and." So that means nobody in there under the age of 21, the way I'm reading that. And I just wanted to make sure that's what you wanted.
I'm gonna have to make a change to that, but it's supposed to be, you have to be old enough to purchase alcohol if you're gonna buy alcohol, and tobacco, 18 if you're gonna purchase tobacco. During, during the work session, the council didn't wanna put the age numbers on there.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so I just need to tweak probably the wording for it then.
Okay. So if there's a liquor license that's been awarded, then all of those laws would come, convey to this. If there was no liquor license, and somebody wanted to open up a purely, I don't know how they'd make enough money, but, but purely a cigar place, then it would be 18, under today's rules.
Right. And she, the applicant is proposing, is almost prepared to be awarded a Class D liquor license to sell beer and wine.
Okay. Thank you. I do have, one other question is, how do we validate, verify, how would we know the city, we the city, know that 20% of sales would be under a certain category? Under what mechanism would we be able to know that?
Well, for one, before the UNO is issued, we would have to, the fire marshal would go out to ensure that she meets all the standards that are based on the UNO, the conditions are therefore, and if she was to sell, say, food that's not like pre-prepared snacks or something, she would have to have health code approval. So if someone from our department, either code enforcement or the fire marshal, or even if the police, went out there and did randomly checks and saw that she was selling, say, hot dogs or something, or chicken, she would automatically be in violation, and she would be cited. But far as the standpoint, we don't have a tracking mechanism, but when she's awarded her UNO, the fire marshal has to make sure that she meets all the
So let me tease this apart a little bit. So I understand on the prepackaged food, you know, that's something you could verify by looking at.
Right.
But a year from now, when you said, because you said it has to be, cannot exceed 20% of sales, does the city normally track those kinds of stats for other things?
Well, this will be the first type of business of this magnitude, and we don't have anything instituted at this moment that tracks those type of things. This type of business is the first of its nature if it will be approved, so I'm sure there would have to be some type of discussion internally of how to proceed with the tracking mechanism moving forward.
Yeah. So, again, from a, from a Planning Commission standpoint, I don't have a problem with it. It's, it's just this, you know, putting these mechanisms in there, and then incurring some sort of enforcement regime
Right.
that, that would have to go along with that, and as long as the council's happy with that, that's, that's really in their ballywick. But this seems, this seems to have, you know, some real challenges there. But, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions. So what's the age requirement, and I just don't know what this is, to purchase alcohol and to purchase tobacco?
Well,
Currently.
During the work session or the introduction session, when we were talking about the age requirements, the council didn't wanna put a strict age, 18 or 21, they wanted some verbiage that would cover it, but didn't have the numbers, so to speak. So I thought this would encompass everything they were asking for.
What is your question, the current age?
Yeah.
The current age, you cannot purchase tobacco if you're under the age of 18 and 21 for alcohol.
Okay. So, I guess another question I had, is this, under this zoning, would this be a freestanding building, or is this part of a shopping center?
It pretty much depends on where they, they tend to locate. I mean, if, say, for instance, if they were gonna go in the commercial shopping zone, it could be in Town Center, in a attached building, or it could be on the freestanding, it doesn't really, it just depends on where they're trying to go. I mean, because we have some properties that zone freestanding, and then we have some properties that's all combined or attached together.
And so if it's part of a much larger building, especially newer buildings, is there requirements, if we were to grant this, is there requirements for, I'm just thinking about all the smoke and all this stuff in this facility, the doors are opening, patrons are, maybe there's a restaurant next door that has outside seating, I'm just thinking about, is there additional requirements for exhausts or things like that?
Well, I do know that the applicant, with her application, she, she is proposing to have a smoke eater system that kinda helps with the ventilation and kinda masking the smoke and the smells for the site.
Was there any consideration by staff to include some of those requirements? Again, Ms. Holland, I'm sorry, I, you, I interrupted.
No, it's fine.
But again, those were some of the questions that I had, as far as air handling units, and I don't see that anyone is signed up here. I don't know if we have the applicant here that might wanna talk. But again, specifically, I'd also like to talk about what the Maryland laws are about smoking in, you know, in buildings, and, you know, you can't walk into a retail store right now and smoke a cigarette, and I'm not sure what laws those are. And just curious as to the difference between having a retail cigar shop, which I know if my son-in-law is watching, he's thinking, come on, mom-in-law, you know, I'm ready for one in Laurel for when I visit, versus a store, you know, what part of it is drawing people because they're gonna be able to stay there and smoke, versus having this as a retail?
I don't think I have the paper from where the, where she would be not having to follow the guidelines of smoking inside. I think I left that behind. But to answer your question as far as, like, the conditions, someone asked about the conditions, or did we, for the ventilation systems or something, just so we're all clear, and I think you know this, when, if this was to get approved from the mayor and city council, she would have to come back to get a special exception. And then during that time, there would be a lot more stipulations and requirements that myself and staff or the commission can put on the application. But I'm more than happy, I don't have the paperwork with me, I forgot it at my desk, but that states where she's exempt from that law of smoking inside, because she's selling the tobacco, and then she's allowed to smoke, her with the patrons.
Madam Chairman, I could. So, so we're up against this, this challenge that I think we often have with a text amendment. So we have a text amendment that's gonna apply across the city, in each one of these zones. So this individual applicant, in my opinion, isn't germane to this issue.
Correct.
While she may be wanting to put in a smoke eater and do this, and do that, and do this other thing, let me ask a broader question. Does there anything today that prohibits her from starting this kind of business? By right?
In the City of Laurel?
Yeah.
Yes, because it's not allowed by our zoning code.
So, a business that's specifically a cigar, whatever, is prohibited, or it's just not allowed by right?
It's not allowed by right, because the use is not allowed, the use is not in our zoning ordinance, so therefore, when the use is not in our ordinance, it's not allowed. So that's why she's doing a text amendment to try to get it.
Can you clarify what use? You can sell cigars in the City of Laurel. I think what we're talking about is the smoking, correct?
The smoking portion of it.
It's the smoking.
But there's nothing that would prohibit you with a Class D liquor license today to allow smoking on your present, present, on your premises while somebody was enjoying a beer?
If, say, for instance, if a bar had a liquor license, they wouldn't be able to, if a bar on anywhere in the City of Laurel wanted to smoke or have people smoke, they wouldn't be allowed for one, because they might not have a certain type of liquor license, but they have a full kitchen. And once you have a full kitchen and sell full foods, prepared meals, then you're in a whole nother bargain.
Yeah, I'm with you. The state law would kick in, so you can't have indoor smoking.
Right.
I'm with you. I'm thinking that, I mean, I don't know where the, where the council is on this process and, and where they would be. I think, I think the reason this is coming before us now is so that it doesn't have to come back to us, because ultimately, the council's gonna decide on their ordinance.
The council will make the decision on the ordinance, however, she does have to come back for the special exception.
For her specific site?
For her specific one. So this is just simply to approve, to make amends to our zoning code.
Okay, so if council decides to tweak this ordinance after it leaves our jurisdiction, will that have to cycle back to us or not?
No.
Okay. So, Madam Chairman, I'm willing to vote approve this, knowing that I think the council will probably have some more work on this specific ordinance. The general idea of a, of a smoking facility, I personally don't have any heartburn with. There may be somebody, some people that do, and that's, that's fine. But, but I think this ordinance, if that's what we're being asked to work on, we're outside of our lane, right? Because you got health code stuff now, you're gonna have to have enforcement, somebody's gonna have to figure out how to do the 20% thing. There, there's a lot that gets wound into those few words, right? As, as these things are want to do, and I, I think if what we're being asked to render an opinion about is, do we or don't we, as a body representing the community, agree to the general idea of a smoking facility of this type? Again, not for this location, but as a text amendment, so it would be available to any place in those zones in the city, then I think that's what's in front of us. These individual words and the, the compliance regimes that those will, will manifest are, I think, beyond our job. I mean, I, as much as I enjoy those debates, I don't think that's our job, so.
But let me ask, in terms of the list of conditions, which, somebody drafted those conditions, would it not be within our right to add conditions such as air handling units and special, because again, the last thing I, with Commissioner Holland on some of the things, that if this is going in between, I'm trying to think of, you know, the yogurt place and, you know, and something else over in Town Center, and if, if they're sharing air handling units and all of that, so I'm thinking, there are so many, not sure how we came up with just these four conditions, that dancing's not permitted, but yet we aren't dealing with anything about the type of air unit or how it might impact another business. Do you not think that those kinds of conditions would be within us as a planning commission?
Well, Madam Chair, the
Thank you.
The items listed in the ordinance are specific to the use. The conditions, when it comes before you for special exception, is where you can set conditions for the specific location.
Okay.
So you would have an opportunity to, in case it is between a yogurt place and a pizza place, you would have the opportunity to say, okay, you know, no smoking whatsoever outside, the air handling units, what have you, what have you, what have you, and on and on. There are some health department regulations that will cover this. And it gets into, you know, food handlers at a restaurant, that was one of the things that led the state to prohibit smoking in a lot of the restaurants. So there will be other regulations beyond the cities that will apply to this.
Thank you.
But we're, we're being asked to change approval of text amendment, which is a change to the current zoning, right?
What?
It's for the current zoning in the city. So, I mean, you know, I just kinda feel, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but, you know, as Rick asked about whether or not, you know, where the zone is and what it covers, I mean, I, I just feel like I need more information to be comfortable, because it's just like a blanket change to the zoning without, yes, I know that it has to go through other levels of approval, but if, if we're here as a body to represent the citizens, you know, I'm just not comfortable. I mean, I would like to see where this area is, what kind of buildings are in here, so that we can maybe decide as to, if there's gonna be additional restrictions, what they might should be, you know, what we might consider. I'm ju, I just feel like it's, you know, I'm just approving the zoning, and then I'm relying on everyone else five steps down to
Let me try something and see what staff thinks. Could we put up item five that would say something to the effect, and I'm not gonna be very artful here, that as part of the special exception process, that an assessment of the air quality, both internal and external of the facility, should be examined and presented as part of that? Is that, are we allowed to put a stipulation on what they have to put into the special exception process, is what I'm asking? Because I don't, you know,
Absolutely.
I don't wanna have to, you know, every location is gonna be somewhat different, and I don't wanna be too prescriptive. I would trust a body of people that would look at an assessment sometime downstream and say, okay, you've done the work, you know there's gonna be a smoke eater here, there's nobody on the south side, or I've got a chimney that's 40 feet in the air, whatever it happens to be, but they, they can then convince a group of people that they've abated what might be a troublesome issue. And something like that, if we're permitted to say, in your, in your package that you send in for special exception, you gotta address the, the, the
Right. As you said, during the special exception process, you know, it's a much more due diligence. We have to send out notifications to the planning department, to the health department, to the police, to, internally, so we have more opportunity to see the comments that people may bring in and the issues that may arise. Simply, this is just to, you know, change our zoning code to allow it by special exception in those zones, which is, for the most part, commercial zones. There's some places that are, buildings are affixed, and there's some that stand alone. It's, you know, not necessarily for the specific location, but as a whole.
So No, I was gonna say, so if that's allowed, I would propose a number five that says something to the effect that the applicant would be responsible for producing a exhaust air, an air assessment report as part of the special exception package for consideration. And then we would have the data that, or we, or whoever future body would have, and to say, yeah, that's reasonable, or no, it's not. And they can tell us how many cubic feet per square foot and all of those kinds of things, because I don't know if we're gonna be, if we try to set, you know, individual parameters, I just can't imagine I, I just can't imagine, we're, we're, we're getting into a realm that I used to call Etch A Sketch Engineering, and it gets a little troublesome. So if we can put in something like that, or recommend that the council puts in something like that, that might be a way for us to move this off of our docket and put it into the political process where probably it belongs.
I have another question. Did staff, I, I tried to find a location to go and look at one of these. Again, because my only knowledge of it is from New Orleans, or I think there used to be an old, old, old one on Route One in College Park that you would never, you know, pull, pull into that parking lot. So I guess one of my questions in reading this and why I wanted to go and see one and see the clientele and all of this is, does the city want, what, what in this does the city really want to bring hookah bars or cigar bars to the city? So is there a place I could go and see it, or did you all go and visit places or any of that to help give me some assurance?
Not to cut you off, I, um, there's several around in the region, a lot in Baltimore and DC also. In the applicant's business plan, you didn't receive it because if it was appro, if the ordinance is approved, once it came back to you guys for a special exception, you would have a whole lot more information to go by, including her business plan, et cetera, et cetera. However, there is, um, a lounge, Alphilon, Cigar Lounge in Gambros, Tobacco Leaf in Jessup, and W. Curtis Draper in Bethesda, in Washington DC. So there are a few around, and I know there are some other ones in Prince George's County. I'm not really familiar with them, so.
Would anybody else find one?
There's not really that many that's close here. And actually, the applicant, she did a survey during Main Street Festival and had a lot of people, um, said they want one in the city. And that would be a part of the special exception application if it's approved, the ordinance. Because I mean, she, she really did her due diligence on it, so.
Thank you. I have one last question.
Yes, ma'am.
This talks about retail and smoking lounge, but we're not really just talking about smoking. Everything talks about smoking, selling of, smoking-related tobacco items. It doesn't mention alcohol, but then as part of the lounge, it's alcohol, the purchase of alcohol. So I'm assuming if you're purchasing it, you're also sitting there drinking it, so you're drinking alcohol at twenty-one. But if you're under the age of eighteen, you can also be in the lounge with the alcohol and, and smoking too. I'm just a little confused as to, you know, if we're going to have both of those things. And I'm not, I mean, I've seen a couple of them. So I'm not necessarily, I've seen some really good ones and some really horrible ones.
Well, the main reason, not to cut you off, the main reason the eighteen part is there because the applicant proposes to have somewhat like a hookah night for college students or something, where most of the college students are eighteen, nineteen. They're not, they're old enough to partake in smoking, smoking and purchasing tobacco, but they're not old enough to drink. And then she was going to have an enforcement mechanism, like if you're a certain age for the hookah night, you have a ban and you can't sell, purchase, buy any type of alcohol. And a lot of the regulations with the alcohol laws is done at the county and the state levels. That's why some of the information isn't in the packet regarding from us, from our standpoint. Once again, a lot of the information, it looks like it's bare, but it's not, it's bare because this wasn't the packet for the special exception. Now, if this was for the special exception, you would have had a whole lot more information. You know, this was just for the ordinance and to get your thoughts and to recommend approval for the council.
So they would be, they would mingle together? So you, you said hookah night, but then you said a hookah night for college students, but then they would have bans? So if they would have bans, they're going to still be there with people who are drinking alcohol?
Well, no, scratch that. If it's hookah night, it's for college students, that's under twenty-one.
Okay.
And I think there are laws that if you're selling alcohol, you have to have food, right?
Not for the, the license that she's getting, she's getting a Class D license where it's no food, no kitchen.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I'm thinking of the right place, isn't this unique in itself that this is a duplex and the one side is residential?
Well, we didn't mention the location that she was proposing to go to. But since that's brought up, um, where she's looking to locate is 604 Main Street, and I'm not sure if residential is right there right now.
So it's not the 604 Main Street?
It's residential. That's residential.
Well, I thought one side is, right?
One side, yeah.
I'm not sure, like I said, right now, I just know the vacant storefront area. I mean, I didn't get into all my research. Like I said, once again, when I was getting to the special exception, it would have been much more, you know, comprehensive, I have to say.
But what we have tonight does not pertain to that location?
It doesn't pertain to a specific area.
Yeah.
But it could.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Does anyone, I do not have anyone signed up to speak. Does anyone wish to speak on this? Welcome. If you would state your name and address?
I'm sure I can.
Thank you, welcome.
I'm the only that is considering doing a cigar lounge in Laurel. So some of the questions that you asked, if you'd like to ask me some questions, I can feel free to ask them for you.
Do you have other businesses? Is it, would this be your first business or you have other of these businesses?
I have a business. I've had other businesses before, yes.
Of, of smoking lounges?
I've been dealing with cigars over a year now, yes.
Do you have any that are just retail stores or they, do they need to be linked, the retail and having the smoking lounge?
I think, well, visit, um, my, my reason for doing the cigar lounge lounges because when I go on to visit lounges, smoking, I mean, just purchasing cigars is, you can do that anywhere. You can purchase it at 7-Eleven, Wawa. I just wanted to bring something new and new venue here. And going out to the lounges that I went to, there's nothing here in the Laurel area. Coming here is something that I think that would, would benefit Laurel, also bring people here, which is more of a, a high cloud, a high skill type of lounge where, um, yes, it is some cigar, I mean, smoking is cigars and then with the purchase of wine and beer. I can't tech like they open it for you, but if you want to open it and enjoy the atmosphere with the TV, you got your football night, your basketball night, hookah night. I'm more of a hookah, Penn hookah. A lot of the college student like the vape hookah. But I just, I didn't want to just cater all, I mean, not cater or bring something to the college student. I mean, I do have a daughter that's in school, twenty-year-old, and, you know, some of them do it, so I want to be to cater to them as well. And I do understand what you're saying, the mixing up the age group, but I have to say that if I could do thirty-five and older, cool. But as we were speaking before, um, they didn't want to put an age restriction on, on the location. So we kept it for seventeen because a lot of them are hookah smokers, um, and then twenty-one, of course, they can purchase. But it'll be a way that, um, the hookah night, they'll have vans, I have staff that will, that will monitor them. So it's a way that we will be able to monitor that so that underage would not be able to drink. And I do believe that when we specify certain nights as a hookah night, some people that smoke cigars, sometimes they don't come because they just feel like that's a hookah night. So I want to be able to, to be able to mix it so that way people can have option to come. On a hookah night, it's a hookah, and then the rest of the nights more so just the regular night, like the hookah, I mean, Monday nights are special night, Tuesday nights would be, um, Tuesday night would be a spoken word. Wednesday would be like hookah night, Thursday would be like ladies' night, Friday would be a mix and mingle happy hour. And then Saturday and Sunday would be more like a kickback if there's anything going on special round and we can celebrate here. Again, there's no dancing, but it's just pretty much a little atmosphere to get the community together, to do something here. The closest one that I've been to that are really like a nice scale one is in Bethesda, and I'm trying to bring that here. Um, yes, there is one not too far from here, but it doesn't have that upscale touch that I know, that I'm looking for. When I did the Main Street Festival, I had a four hundred signatures of people wanting to see this, wanting to see the lounge here. So it'll be something that, I know that it'll be something different, but it's something that is definitely well needed here to bring into the community.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Answered my question about the schedule.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions?
And then I think you were asking also about the smoke eaters. Um, there, there are smoke eaters that, um, based on the size of the location, that's a type of smoke eater. So it all, it all varies, but you'll have smoke eaters upstairs, downstairs, and all throughout, wherever it needs to be at, there'll be smoke eaters to be coming. I, I enjoy cigars, but I, um, I don't want to go into a spot that's just full of smoke, like I have to just contain myself. So I do understand the importance of having some ventilation for, you know, for the, for the smoke. So, I mean, I, I do think that very, you know, very important, serious.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was this amendment a provide for, let's see, current?
Thank you very much.
Places that sell alcohol, can they all just then have hookah bar, you know, sell have hookah? Or is this just limited to, this would be limited to this particular type of, it would have to be called, quote, a hu, a hookah slash smoking?
Looks like retail, it, it would be retail with smoking lounge, is that correct?
So would just be limited to?
It would be retail and smoking lounge. Say for instance, like bars and stuff, they wouldn't be able to start having hookah for one. They'll start cross-gapping with the Maryland laws about where you, you're smoking on a premises.
Okay.
Violation. So basically, if whoever comes forth, they can't have any food, like no kitchen. If they do have a liquor license, it has to be a certain class where they don't have any food regulation. So basically, to answer your question, I think that's what I'm going to do.
Okay.
Yeah, as, as much as I'm trying to find a way here, Madam Chairman, I, I don't think this ordinance is really ready yet. I think, uh, I think for us, for me to be able to successfully vote in favor of it, that I think this needs to go back to both the, the council for some of these considerations and for staff. We're, we're, I'm worried we're mixing. I appreciate the applicant's thing here, but what's in front of us isn't her business. It's somebody that's nowhere near as professional and as nice and as well thought through as what she's doing. It's, uh, you know, the, the, the antithesis of that. And, and I'm really just, I think this needs a, a, just a bit more work and, and understanding of, of how all this is going to play. Uh, that's just my personal opinion. If there was a pressing need, you know, I might be dissuaded from that. But right now, I, I can't, I don't think I can support recommending this ordinance to the council. I'd be happy to make a motion to that effect, but that's where my head is.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question. When were you planning to open for business? Had you submitted anything else to the city?
She was planning to go for special exception if approved next month.
Next month.
We do have a meeting in December, don't we?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Not all entertain a motion?
Well, if it's me making the motion, I will move that we do not approve text amendment number two thirty-six, ordinance number eighteen fifteen, and ask the staff and, and the members of the drafting committee at the council level at their work session. Because I'd be just afraid that no matter what we presuppose in here, it's their ordinance. So I'd like to see their ordinance, and then I'm happy to do it. So I'm going to, that's going to be my motion.
Well, second.
Ms. Green, if you'll call the roll, please. Mr. Wilson?
I vote yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mrs. Holland?
Yes.
Chairman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I don't think it will be hard to fix it, it's just a matter of getting it fixed.
I have no other business. Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.